To order at 6:33. And the first item is agenda amendments. And the first thing I want to speak to is we have nominations to fill board vacancies. And I want to explain to the community and to the board, because we did not have an election at town meeting for board members, we've been told, and I spoke directly with the Secretary of State's office, that we do not need to appoint to vacancies because there are no vacancies because there was not an election. So Richard and Chris are both still in office either until we hold an election for new board members for Highgate or the Highgate School Board dissolves on June 30th. Dissolve sounds so strung, so terrible, but it is no longer operational. So we have, we have board members that are still in office. And again, I spoke with Secretary of State's office on that, so we can feel quite confident moving forward. But having said that, so the first two items on the agenda, we're nominating and then swearing in, so we do not need to do those two things. And I spoke with Wendy about that as well. So I think I'm going to start with nominations for the board chair.
I nominate Chris Shepherd.
Are there any other nominations?
Very good, Richard.
Any other nominations? Hearing none, all those in favor of Chris Shepherd being the board chair of the Highgate School Board signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All against? Well, motion carries.
Wow, you guys tripped over yourselves enough for that one?
So Chris, I guess it's fair meaning.
Okay, so we'll fill our, the rest of our reorg. So next we need a nomination for a vice chair.
I nominate the fine lady that's right to your left.
I second it.
Don't you be looking around.
Uh, any other nominations? Hearing none, uh, all those in favor of Lisa being our vice chair, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries, four to zero. Anybody against? Okay. Uh, nominations for our board clerk.
I nominate Steve Scott.
I'll second that.
Well, he's not here.
I did, I did ask him if he minded doing it, and he said he was fine with doing that.
That doesn't make a difference if you minded or not.
Don't come to me here.
Uh, let's see, all those, all those in favor of Steve Scott being our board clerk, uh, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, four to zero. Uh, SU board, nominations, we need three people to do the SU board as long as we have an SU board.
Yeah, aren't they volunteers?
Well, you have to nominate. I mean, I'm willing to do it again. Steve said he's willing to do it again.
Me too.
I don't know, you want to leave it the way it was?
It's up to Lisa, she wants to make it.
I'm good.
You're good with that?
So we'll need a nomination to have Steve, Dave, and myself be the SU.
I'd make that.
Second?
I'll second it.
All those in favor, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Uh, our committees, uh, finance committee, we need two people to do finance committee.
I'm happy to keep doing what I'm doing.
Perfect. And I think Steve would be a good choice for that also.
I make a motion to have it like it was last time.
I'll second.
All those in favor of Steve and Lisa being finance committees, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, four to zero. And last but not least, buildings and grounds.
I'm making my, a motion to for Chris Shepherd and Richard Flint.
Any other nominations? Somebody else want to do it?
Question on that, Chris.
Sure.
Do you have to be a board member to be part of that committee?
Yes.
Yeah.
Uh, all those in favor of Richard and myself being buildings and grounds, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Wait, who, who did the motion? Dave had the motion. Who was the second on that?
I'll second it. I thought Richard did maybe, but no.
I don't remember.
All right.
Lost track. Anyway, we voted four to zero, it carries.
So the next one I don't think you need, it was something we were thinking of, there's a lot of confusion at one of our other board members about what that meant. Given where we are, and since that memo came out, I think we can skip that. That was really about issuing teacher contracts. Should we need, should, should we be doing that as a local district? So if that does happen, then we'll come to it then.
You mean the authorization of board chair?
Yeah. There was so much discussion about it at one of our other board meetings, I just thought it's really not necessary to do in a typical year. It's, it's a nice thing to do, but I think this year's not typical, so.
Far from it.
Maybe we should just let that one be.
And then last but not least, date and time for regular board meetings.
So currently you meet on the second Thursday of the month at 6:30. Are you wanting to continue that?
Uh, yes. Need a motion?
It's good, that way that becomes your regular time.
I make a motion that we have our regular meetings, second Thursday at 6:30.
I'll second it.
Any discussion? All those in favor, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, four to zero. Okay, we're on to public comments.
That was easy.
Just want to see what's on the agenda that, um, there was question at town meeting day about legality of memorandum of understanding or agreement, however it was worded, for the Cassidy property, and if it would withstand a challenge. Of course, I emailed Chris to give him a heads up that I'd like to bring the topic up, right? Because if Swanton's already looked at what property value is, I would assume if this merger comes forward, we would have a challenge. I don't know what you came up with the results.
We didn't, uh, we didn't call a lawyer again, because it does cost money. Uh, depends on this discussion is whether we do.
Yeah.
Um, my understanding is the new unified board has to, uh, go with any predetermined agreement. So the new board, unified board couldn't challenge it, because they have to go with it. So it'd have to be Swan individual to challenge it, because somebody on the board can't use board funds or school funds to challenge it. So it'd have to have somebody, and at what gain would they, I guess I, I don't see the fear, because I don't see what their gain would be, because they would cost us as much money as we'd make from selling it by challenging it.
I realize that, but it's sometimes difficult.
No, it's a question.
What logic into a, I mean, we see that in Montpelier every day. A lot of these challenges don't have much logic, they're just challenging something for the fact of challenges.
So part one of our articles of agreement is that all contracts, agreements, uh, have to be honored. So that's also something that the voters actually get to weigh in on. And if any board member had an idea that they wanted to even approach the members of that MOU to make a change, and everybody agreed to it, so Cassidys, the Flints, and the school district all said, yes, we're gonna, you're gonna do X with it, we would have to go to the voters if it involved transferring or selling or anything like that. So, um, you know, that, it's, one, we have to honor all agreements. And secondly, anything would have to go to voters.
Right. I just want us to cross our K's and dot our I's in that way. If it's already being brought up in our town meeting, there's rumble in.
Oh, yeah.
In communities, and you know how legal challenges go.
That is something that after we came up with it initially, we revisited, uh, about three or four months ago, and we actually edited it a little bit and re-signed it. Um, and we feel pretty confident in it now, because the way it's worded now, all three parties have to agree. So even if the new unified board decides to do something different, uh, Richard and Kim Flint would have to agree, and the Cassidys would have to agree, to change what the current use is.
Plus, they went through legal counsel when they brought it up.
About both times, actually.
Both times, or both, they're just on, bringing up.
Oh, yeah.
Oh, yeah.
Nobody that I know wants to lose that property.
Nor do we. I a hundred percent agree with you.
I guess is there, is there a budget for the item, like a new business? So for the budget, I really think, uh, we need to, now that we had the bar passed, and we're going to repair the parking lot, we needed, the school board and the slide board need to work together and put a fine item on what it's going to cost. Or if the school board chooses to use a snow removal service other than the town highway, but I think it needs to be in the budget, um, going forwards, because like I said previously, um, you know, if Swanton, NVU already settled out there, we're going to be paying a portion of that. And then if we don't have anything in the school budget, it's going to be on their tax, on our town tax, and we'll pay a hundred percent of the maintenance, uh, the snow removal for Highgate, it just doesn't sound good business.
And I believe Franklin would probably want to do something similar, because I believe their town's about theirs too. Yeah, that would be up to the new transition board that would be formed or sworn in at the next organizational meeting.
Okay, okay.
Um, which I am probably most likely a member of, so I will carry that on to the next board.
And I, uh, I'll talk about my other issues in new business on bond, though. Got different public comments for me.
Okay. So future board meetings, as I just mentioned, our next district organizational meeting, uh, that was postponed and rescheduled for March 21st, 7:00 PM at the Treyhand Theater at NVU. That is a very important meeting for everyone to attend, it'll, it'll shape how our unified district will look. Uh, our next Franklin Northwest SU meeting is scheduled for April 3rd, 6:30 in Franklin, which may become a transition board meeting, right?
It could possibly.
Yeah. And then our next Highgate School Board meeting is here in the library, April 11th at 6:30. Uh, on this consent agenda, adopting the meeting minutes from February 14th and March 4th. Has everybody had a chance to look those over?
I did. I left them in. I make a motion to approve.
Second?
I'll second it.
Discussion? I looked them over, I didn't see anything wrong. So, uh, all those favors of adopting February 14th and March 4th minutes, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, four to zero. Principals report.
I think this one was. I'll have to make sure, so. Not over. Yes, yeah, one's for you. Um, so, um, three things that we talked about, let me, let me think. I think the Plan Do Study Act I'll talk about, it's under high quality staffing and instruction. Uh, and this, a ton of credit goes to Jen and Edna for this. Uh, we know the importance of mini lessons where all the direct instruction occurs, and we decided, Jen and Edna specifically decided to do a Plan Do Study Act cycle, which is something that, um, our continuous improvement plan will require us to do. Uh, but this is a trial run, and they decided they're going to do that cycle on mini lessons specifically. I mean, we've invested money in the rugs up at the front of the room for that kind of instruction specifically, and, um, a lot of the training for teachers has been in providing that direct instruction, so, um, they did observations of every classroom teacher over the course of about two weeks. They collected data on a number of domains of what makes a good mini lesson. So if you go to kind of page, it'll be page four. Um, where it says what Marzano elements were observed. This gives you a flavor for like, you know, what the teachers were teaching during that mini lesson. Were they in the very beginning of a unit previewing content? Were they towards the end of a unit, or in the middle where they're reviewing stuff? Were they, uh, highlighting specific portions of a unit? And after about those two weeks, it took them another week to tabulate all the data, and then the next faculty meeting we had, which I think was, um, the Wednesday before break, maybe, uh, they presented to the whole staff, this is what we found. So we've, we've talked a lot about what's best practice for mini lessons, this is what it actually looked like when we were in your classrooms. Um, the staff took that really well. Uh, Jen and Edna were, were, um, great presenters, they were engaging with it, but they, they didn't sugarcoat anything, they said this is what's really good, and this is what we need to improve. Um, if you look on page three, the page is just, um, it's just pictures, that's the kind of data that they presented, it's not all of it, but they looked at, were there really consistent rules and procedures observed during the mini lessons? Where were the students during the mini lesson? How long was the mini lesson? What was the transition like after the mini lesson? And so they have data on all that stuff. They presented that to the staff. And I think most importantly then, it wasn't just like, hey, this is what's going on, now what are we going to do about it? Um, they provided an opportunity at that staff meeting for, um, the staff to look at the essential elements of a mini lesson, which is its length, posted visual learning targets that are referred to consistently throughout, the balance of teacher and student talk, um, the engagement of students, the rules and procedures, um, and the specific elements of, that go into a mini lesson. And they said, what are the strategies that, that make a successful, uh, that make each of these successful? Teachers listed those all. Pat, Jen, Edna, and I compiled them into a visual, and now teachers have set a goal over the next six weeks, they pick one component on this list on page four, um, the five bulleted list where they're going to try to improve. Uh, and it's tied to the observation that they, that was done in their classroom. So they got some feedback from Jen and Edna, something that was challenging for them, they're going to pick, pick something to work on that aligns with their challenge. And I guess the reason I wanted to bring that, this up specifically is it's, you know, I didn't ever, this never was something that I had to do when I was teaching, which was not that long ago. So it's really, we're really asking teachers to think critically about their own practice, um, and do it in both a qualitative way, which they're used to, but also kind of in a quantitative way too. You know, what, what was the actual length of your mini lesson? There was one that was 45 minutes, that's obviously not what we want. Um, and it does matter, the third or fourth or fifth grade, I don't know what it was, but nobody can sit for 45 minutes and listen. Um, so that, that was, when they showed the pie graph of like what the length of the mini lesson was, people were like, whoa, interesting. Uh, and teachers were just locked in during this. So I think there's a lot of potential for this. It spoke to sort of the, the respect that, that the whole staff has for the work that Jen and Edna do, because they were, they were, like I said, locked in. Um, and so I'm, I'm really hoping that over the next six weeks, um, we come back and review this again, which Jen and Edna will do, they'll do a second round of observations, the exact same format for the observations, and see, did we improve, um, generally, and then on the teacher's specific goals? So, uh, we talked a lot about that. Any, any questions about what that actually looked like? Let's try to explain it, and I was there, so I can picture it, but does that make sense? Is there anything you want, want to know about this whole thing?
Looks like it was a good experiment.
It really wa, and it was an experiment in a lot of ways. It wasn't like a sci, like a scientific method, like, you know, they, they have to make a hypothesis beforehand, like, what do we think is going on here? And then actually try to figure it out, so.
And come up with an answer.
Yep. And so we do, I think as a staff, we were able to pull some themes that were pretty consistently something we can work on. Uh, length was one of them. Uh, the balance of teacher talk versus student talk was another one. Um, you, you want some student talk, um, but it can't be all student talk with it, or the lesson starts to go in like a, one of these directions. There's, there's no direction to it. Uh, but at the same time, a teacher cannot be the only one whose voice is heard, so those were, those were just a couple of themes.
So will they revisit this?
Yeah, it's the, so in six weeks, um, as I mentioned on page four, those, those five bullets or whatever it is.
Yep.
They, teachers are setting a goal on one of them. I am going to establish better rules and procedures during my mini lesson. I am going to improve the balance of my teacher talk versus student talk. Jen and Edna will then go and do the exact same format of observation six weeks from now, look at the data from that as a school, just like we did, and also for the teachers on their specific goals. Um, and that's, that's that sort of, just long enough, six weeks to, to really think critically and try to do something new, and, and then hopefully have some success with it, whereas, you know, two weeks would probably not be quite enough. You know, if you wait too long though, it's, it's gone. Um, the opportunity for, for learning and new practice is gone, so the answer is yes, and a six week cycle, we're going to come back and look at it. And, and again, this is something that is required to be our school continuous improvement plan, um, but this is sort of a trial run at that. And Julie, correct me if I'm wrong, it wasn't part of last, the last time we submitted, but it will have to be part of the next one?
Yes, um, we're, we're going to be, so we're really practicing how to do these continuous improvement plans. We don't have to submit our work, but we have to have it drive how we develop our continuous improvement plan, so that it's really like action research that happens in our schools.
Um, I guess, uh, we'll, um, pull your attention to one more thing. Have you noticed when you walked by that big pineapple that's up on the board over there? Did you see that on the wall across from the mailboxes? Okay, so I, I think that's pretty neat. I did not paint that. Um, so it's called a pineapple board. Um, we, as we've, I've mentioned a number of times, we're kind of just starting with that restorative practices and the restorative circles that go along with it. And the best way the teachers learn is from seeing each other. So what that is, is a calendar, basically, of four weeks, and all the circles that teachers who feel pretty comfortable with it and are okay with teachers coming to watch can put their little pineapple up on the board, and then teachers just submit a request form, I'd like to go see this one. And usually it's during the morning meeting time, where we'll have just another certified staff member cover their morning meeting, and they can go observe this person doing that work, because it's just getting over the hump of seeing it, seeing what it actually looks like, so that they can actually do it. So when Annie comes and trains us, a little bit more in June, the hope is that every teacher, even if they're not practicing restorative circles in their classroom, they've had several looks at what it can look like when it's done well. Um, so that's what that is, and hopefully we start to see people signing up pretty regularly. That just started to roll out on Tuesday, so, uh, let's see, fingers crossed.
Chris, do you also want to just highlight for the board, uh, the fact that we're doing a change to his full calendar on the 29th?
Yes, sorry, I forgot, Pat added this page at the very end here. Um, so in order to make sure that we can reach our number of required student, uh, school days, we're taking the 29th, which was going to be a conference day, turning it into a half conference day, half student day. Uh, so our conferences will now be spread over two days, and remind me, it's three, two, seven, I believe, on Thursday, and then I can't remember the time on, the exact time on Friday, but there's two different conference slots. Um, and that keeps us on pace to finish. What day do you remember, Julie?
I think it's the 12th, if we'll last, or maybe that's next year.
I don't, I don't remember.
I've been looking at next year's calendar too.
It's the Friday, right?
It is a Friday.
It is a Friday. So without that day, we would be coming back on Monday.
Correct, because of course we, uh.
That sounds right, yes.
Ah.
There it is, it's right, right there.
We didn't hold school on Election Day in November.
Right.
So we're behind.
Yes.
And we have to make up so that we have to require.
Yes, Highgate would have been coming back while everyone else was done, if not for.
So when do, when does staff get done?
Staff would be done, the following Tuesday would be their last day, as of now. Um, they, those two days, Monday and Tuesday, would be training days.
So 17 to 18?
Whatever the Monday and Tuesday is, yes, 17 to 18.
Yeah.
Yeah. Yep.
Steve just started running the meetings since I was chairman.
Right?
Julie, yeah, Julie, Chris, Laura, check your emails.
I can't, it's on camera.
I said call me.
Oh, no. No, you're here, it's fine.
Yeah, but I'm sitting over there though.
Okay.
Yeah, I sent you a message saying we didn't, we had a quorum.
I still wanted to be involved.
Okay. I'm glad you're here then.
I'm glad you're here.
You just stay over there.
Make sure somebody wipes it down after you go.
I can bring my soap.
Okay, uh, any discussion on the principal's report?
Great job.
Oh, thank you, Chris.
Yep. Uh, on to business report.
Well, Lisa has the check warrants, so I'm passing out a financial report for you. We can.
Laura, can I stop by later and to my side of the floor?
Who stopped by with, with the school district?
Some people from the areas, district, school districts.
So what did you do, go over, uh, go over Alice, or what did?
That wasn't really something we talked about in the day. So Richard's asking more questions about the principal's report, so just, do you want me to talk real quick about the IFR?
Oh, I was going to do it.
Oh, perfect. Let's let you lead.
I can give the whole, and Chris, you can jump in about Highgate.
Okay.
When we do that. It's a great question, thanks, Richard.
Do you want to do the warrants first, and then I can?
Do you want a motion?
Sure. Yes, let's do check warrants first.
I'm sorry, it's kind of late.
Why, yeah, okay, I got lost. Uh, check warrants, I need a motion to approve.
And the amount of?
For the month of February.
Yep.
Month of February.
For the month of February, 2019, $327,707.28.
I'll make that motion.
Second?
I'll second it.
Discussion? Doesn't look good?
It does.
All those in favor of accepting February check warrants, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, five to zero.
I have a, I have a few things to talk about under my business report.
His vote.
I just wanted to make the board aware and, um, give some kudos to, um, your onsite
food service staff. Um, we have just completed a three-day, um, school food authority, so it's an SU-wide food service review by the Agency of Education Child Nutrition Program, but the site that was chosen was Highgate. They review all the schools, some aspects, but Highgate is really, you know, kind of under ridicule at that time. The representatives today that Julie and I met with gave, um, tons of accreditation to Jill, who is your Abby employee in the kitchen, both in how she treats students, her attitude, her quality, her, um, uh, knowledge of the program, and what kids need to be having, and what's required, um, so just wanted to share that with you. The admin review went really well anyway, um, as far as approval and proper approval of free reduced price hot lunch applications, and kids getting the, uh, the status that they, um, need to support their mealtime. Um, but she went out of her way to, um, applaud what's happening in the kitchen, so I thought that was really great. Um, I did want to mention that she also mentioned that equipment in the kitchen is aging, um, so that will be in the report, uh, but I think we, we know that, and we're addressing some of that in the bond, but she was going to put in some recommendations about, not, not anything big, but some small recommendations, but I just wanted to mention that.
Probably want some exhausted for our stove.
She didn't mention that, I was waiting. Work surfaces, you know.
Cutting boards.
Yeah, um, tables, those sorts of things, um, could save some time if we, but overall it went really, really well, and I just wanted to make sure that Jill Farnsworth, who is your, your person that's dealing with your students every day in the kitchen that is contracted with the Abby group, gets the appreciation for what she's doing. And Tina, who is her regional supervisor. Um, okay, you also have a financial report in front of you. Okay, you also have a financial report in front of you. Um, this financial report is for the current fiscal year, which is fiscal year nineteen, and is through the end of February. Your anticipated carryover is down, you haven't had a report in a few months. Um, it's down, um, from about ninety or a hundred thousand to approximately thirty-five thousand dollar anticipated carryover. You know, there's a lot of year left, we're continuing to monitor, monitor spending, update salary and benefit lines as necessary as staff changes happen and benefit participation changes. One thing to note is your workman's comp insurance and your liability insurance both came in under what I had anticipated them to be, which I was pleasantly surprised with the workman's comp, um, number coming in less for Highgate. So you'll notice some savings in those lines. There's a new out-of-district placement, maybe temporary, may not be, so I'm now anticipating that cost. But overall, I think we're still in, in good shape. The only thing I'm still anticipating that I'm not really sure about is the HRA lines. As we know from last year, we don't have a lot of confidence in what happened last year with our HRA numbers due to the problems with our third-party administrators, so I'm probably being overly cautious of what I'm anticipating for those lines, but that's what I feel comfortable doing right now. So there could be some potential savings there, but we'll wait a little while to see how staff is using those throughout the rest, remainder of the year. And I know you're just seeing it, so if anybody has questions after you look at it, you're welcome to email me or call me or ask me next month. Or ask me now.
I, sorry, I do have a question, Laura.
Okay.
And I know we probably didn't do this more than once, but, um, the peer professional salaries under special ed?
Under special ed, okay.
Yeah. Um, sorry, it's page two. The budget was at two seventy-five and was quite a bit under there. Is that due to the lack of pairs?
No, if you look under instructional.
Oh, yeah.
Yep, so it's just a shift from Janet, so Janet is over, special ed is under.
Yeah.
I mean, there is always a fluctuation in those lines because the turnover is quite high, but...
Yeah, I noticed that, okay.
And that could change before the end of the year, too, we might adjust them back again, or based on time samples, yeah.
Uh, any other questions for the, uh, financial report? Uh, hearing none, I'll entertain a motion to accept the financial report. Any discussion? All those in favor of, uh, accepting the financial report as reported, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries five zero.
Okay, thank you. Back to food service, um, for a minute. Jess Pocat is applying, um, making, uh, completing a grant application for that fifty-fifty, um, equipment grant for the food service, uh, program that becomes available every two years to Highgate. You got it, I think, for the last two cycles. Um, but she's completing that application again now, that would, um, come to you next year. Let me see what she's trying to buy. Sorry. A new refrigerator, I believe.
What is this grant for?
This is an equipment grant for the kitchen.
Oh.
It's a fifty, um, a fifty percent matching grant, it's about twenty-five hundred dollars. Um, and base, it's a fairly easy process, and you're almost guaranteed the money if you go through, um, with doing it. But basically, it says that she's looking for a Kitchridge, um, refrigerator. And there's also potentially a efficiency Vermont rebate on that. Um, but what she's looking for from, um, the board is a commitment to that fifty percent match, which would be approximately fifteen hundred and fifty-one dollars. Plus or minus the, uh, fifty percent of shipping. She's currently, look, I don't believe shipping qualifies, so I've asked her to investigate that as a part of the match. But I just didn't know if the board might be comfortable approving a not-to-exceed amount, so she can at least move forward and submit the grant, knowing that the board's comfortable with the match.
Is that one of the things that they highlighted that we need to update in our kitchen?
Today specifically, no, but I do know that Tina from the Abby, um, has encouraged that.
Okay.
Do we have that in the budget?
Um, it's not, wouldn't come out of your budget, it would come out of your self-sustaining food service account. Um, there is money in there to, to accommodate this, yes.
Do you know how much money is in there? I've been trying to ask, and I never get a straight answer. How much money?
I can email it to you because we just got our audit.
Okay.
Um, it's not finalized yet, we're gonna be doing that next week, but I can, I can tell you that next week.
Okay.
Before next week, if you want an approximation.
So, so you'll be a lot, okay.
Yep.
So is it, i- is, I guess, I just need to know, is there, is there quite a bit, or is there?
There's a, it's all relative, right? I mean, it's over ten thousand dollars.
Okay.
But the prob, we've been making, and that's been accumulating over many years now, and as the program is very successful, of course, you keep gaining, you know, more of a carryover. This year, the programs in general across our SU are not, um, sustaining that level of carryover. We're offering free breakfast to everyone now, um, and overall, our free and reduced-price percentages are slightly lower than they were last year, so your reimbursement amounts are slightly lower than they were, which we're continuing to work on. Participation is about the same, um, so we don't think it's something there. But, um, and, and food costs are up.
Yep.
So, um, we're continuing to monitor it, but overall, that program is sustaining itself, but we're not making the money that we had been previously over the next couple of years. We also have to keep in mind that this is our first year with a fixed-price contract, if you remember talking about that. Um, and so, you know, we're yet to kinda see how that works out by the end of the year. But yes, I can, I'll report that out to you, I'm sorry if you've asked me before and I forgot.
Yeah, while we're on food service, um, I, I know we're going through the Act forty-six, but I know Bakersfield did, I think it was Bakersfield, that they, they put it into their budget, the taxpayers, now the kids, they pay for the meals in Bakersfield, is it Bakersfield, Berkshire, or? Now, i- is that a, is that a good, i- is that something that would be worth doing something like that year, or?
It's a community eligibility provision, or provision two, provision three, um, we've talked about that before.
But it's a different, it's a, that is, what you're saying is what Richmond does. But what, the way I understood it, in Bakersfield and Berkshire, the taxpayers are...
Well, they, they subsidize, so it's the same program, but then they make a line item in their budget because they can't cash flow paying, feeding all kids for free by them, by itself.
Okay.
So they have to make a commitment to earmark budget money, or a budget line item to subsidize. I think it was about a hundred thousand dollars, if I remember correctly, but yeah.
But, but it's not the whole thing then, is what you're saying?
Right, most, most schools, unless your free and reduced-price percentage is upwards of sixty percent.
Yeah.
Which ours is only closer to forty, um, cannot cash flow just based on federal and state reimbursements to the hot lunch program. They have to have some kind of grants or some kinda outside money, general fund money, budget money, um, to subsidize the program. A- as I've said before, I mean, I'm more than happy to pursue that if the board is, something that the board wants to do. I think, cause when we merge, if we merge, that would be a good time to revisit it, um, because it would make it very easy to pool all of our free and reduced-price percentages together and try to...
So, so Laura, you think when, when we merge, we would be more apt to be able to get, uh, free lunch for everybody, or are you?
Well, the impact to each community may lessen.
Right.
Whereas right now, adding a hundred thousand dollars, it wouldn't be a hundred thousand dollars for Highgate, but even adding ten thousand dollars in the Highgate budget to supplement food program, you feel that, you know?
Yeah.
You probably, and I'm, I'm thinking because then you would pool the free and reduced-price percentages also. And if we all made it, you know, all the schools made a conscious effort to really campaign that program, really, then usually your participation goes up, so there's a lot of things we could do at that point. It might be, I'm not guaranteeing that it can happen, cause it's also something the state has to...
It's not easy, but it's...
But it, I mean, Alberg does it, there's a lot of, uh, St. Albans City, I believe, does it.
Well, they have the sixty percent.
But there is a, a conscious commitment that has to happen, one with funding and one with support, that this is something, cause it's not something you would want to go away either, so.
Right.
It's a, it's kinda like a five-year commitment where you're sort of signing on that this is what you wanna do.
It's always great to feed kids, I mean, they just learn better. Always clear.
And while we're on the food service, something I hear here and there, you know, coming to pick up kids and hearing other kids on the sidewalk, that's their parents pick them up, and talking about what you have for lunch today. And I, I don't know, I don't stop the parents and ask, but what I'm hearing is sometimes, you know, a kid, whether they were fooling around, didn't get a chance to eat their whole meal, or if they were, you know, the lesson went late, and they got to lunchroom late, but they're, you know, they're telling their parents, "I had to throw my lunch away because it was time to be done." And I'm sorry, in today's world, when you don't, I mean, we, we think we know what's going on at home, but we don't know if the kid is, is eating again until they get here in the morning. Even if you gotta bring the kid to the, the, the front desk and finish their lunch, and then have somebody walk them back to class, there should be no kid being forced to throw lunch away that they wanna finish. So.
Can I say something about that? My daughter doesn't like the lunches all the time, and she likes cold lunches a lot. And she comes home with it, and she says she doesn't have time, but I know her. She's busy.
I, I agree.
She comes home with the cheese heads or the pretzels and that was sent to her, with, with her for lunch. But, um, it's, it's, it's...
It's, yeah, it's that, you know?
It's not so much the program, I think it's somewhat, it's somewhat the kid, too. And my little one is, yeah, she's busy and she likes to socialize and...
Definitely that.
Yeah, David knows, yeah.
But, you know, I think it's a case-by-case basis, but if a kid wants to finish their lunch and is told, uh, it's time to go back to class, I mean, there's gotta be some accommodation to, you know? And you gotta, like, you gotta be reasonable, too, you can't give them an hour to eat, I mean, that's just not reasonable either, but... If it's five minutes left to, to eat, we gotta figure something out. You don't know what happens at home, and if that kid doesn't eat again until morning, that's just unfortunate.
Oh, that's, I totally agree. I worked in the cafeteria for a year, just as a part-time thing for me. And, um, those kids, they come in, they sit down, they do their thing, and there is a lot of socializing going on. And, um, I agree with you, some of them, yeah, may need a little more time.
How long is the, uh, lunch?
So we got, for the youngest, two grades, K and one, it's twenty-five minutes. For two and up, it's twenty minutes. One of the adjustments we made in, I think in response to this exact concern in October, November, somewhere around there, there were some grade levels that were coming in. And, you know, often when you come in from recess, it's one class, and then the next class, and then the next class. And the parent educators who were doing the lunch cafeteria duty were waiting for all classes to be seated first, and then go in the line, and so an adjustment we made is once a class comes in, they get their stuff down at their seats, then that class goes up to line and doesn't necessarily have to wait for class B and C to come in. You know, I, I do know probably two or three times a week we have somebody finish their lunch in the main office because for whatever reason, they had to go to the nurse after recess, or whatever it is, um, they'll finish their lunch in the main office and then we'll head them back to class. So I think that, uh, parent educators have been given that guidance, that, you know, kids being reasonable and there's, there's a, there's a reason why they didn't finish their lunch, you know, send them to the main office and we're happy to accommodate them, um...
It's time of year, too, Mr. Palmer, you got snow pants, snow boots, and nins and gloves and all that.
Yeah.
That takes some time.
It does.
Sometimes.
And that's, and that's, uh, the winter months certainly put a, like, uh, a more premium on the time than, uh, spring and, and fall do, uh, because it's, it's just time-consuming for kids to get dressed and undressed on. But that's all the more reason why we don't need to wait for all three classes or both classes, if it's a two-class grade level, to be seated first before the first class heads up to line. Uh, I think guidance that was, was well-received because I don't think that it really serves a huge purpose for all three classes to be sitting either.
Okay, uh, we still need to do the commitment part for the fifty-fifty grant. Uh, so I guess I'd entertain a motion to, um, commit to providing funds from the lunch program. Would that be for lunch program profit, or?
You can just say from the hot lunch program, yeah.
From the hot lunch program.
Yep.
Maybe not to exceed twenty-one hundred, that, in case, I'm sorry, not twenty-one hundred, half. Eighteen hundred, sorry.
How much?
Not to exceed eighteen hundred in case the shipping, it can be matched, I don't think it can.
You got it.
So Dave first, second, Steve? Any discussion? Hearing none, uh, all those in favor of, uh, committing to matching not, not to exceed eighteen hundred from the hot lunch program, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries five zero.
Um, and thank you to Jess for doing that, cause it's great that she always is so eager to help with those kinda things. Um, the other thing that I, oh, sorry, actually, this is under a different section, I think, the bond stuff. Yeah, okay, we'll wait, sorry.
Okay, we're on to superintendent's report.
So I won't talk about the Act forty-six things until later in the agenda, so we can do it all at once. But, uh, as Richard asked, and I was gonna highlight out of the newsletter, um, the fact that we had our integrated field review today, um, a little bit about what that is. As you know, all schools are assessed by the Agency of Ed based on our Sback scores and other standardized testing scores. And in the state's plan of how we're measuring school success to the feds, they also included a process called the Integrated Field Review, where our education quality standards are being measured by educators from the field that are then going and visiting schools. So we all got trained this fall in how to, uh, look, what, what to look for and how to measure things. Uh, the process, uh, involved a single day where, uh, a team of, I think we had twenty people, maybe, from the Agency of Education and from Milton School District, from Maple Run, and from Franklin Northeast. So, and we had principals and teachers of all different disciplines. And they came, and they all were in teams. They started their day at MBU at eight o'clock, um, and I welcomed folks, gave them an overview of our schools and how many students and where everything is. Kosha spoke about the curriculum a little bit, um, things we were proud of about our schools, very briefly, because they were then gonna go out to the schools and tour. So we had teams at each school, uh, and then one team that was focusing on business practices and hiring of highly qualified staff and things like that. They came and interviewed me, uh, the curriculum director, special ed. Carol was out, was there from after school, Jeff Benet from the Indian Education Program. Robert was there from tech ed, um, and so we met and they interviewed us. In each school, they, um, observed classrooms, they interviewed families, they interviewed, um, teachers, uh, they interviewed principals.
And students.
And students, too. So it was pretty comprehensive, and I, I'd love to hear what it was like today in Highgate.
Sure, so two, two different teams show up, the first team showed up in the morning. First thing, they got a tour from students, um, had three, three fifth graders take them around. They came back and talked to me and Pat for about an hour. Then they went and saw three different classroom teachers, and then pretty quickly turned around, came back to the main office and interviewed three teachers. That group then left for lunch, a new group came and got us tour from two other student tour guides. And then turned around, went to see three different teachers, and came back and interviewed some parents. Uh, excuse me, interviewed kids first, six different students, dealt with... uh, excuse me, interviewed kids first, six different students, got the total of eleven students were involved in today in some way, um, for about half an hour, then the student day ended, students left, and they had three, uh, parents, one of a, a lower-grade student, one of a middle-grade student, one of an upper-grade student, um, for about half an hour. And I think after that was when they went back to central office to end their day.
Yes, everybody actually ended up at MBU.
MBU, sorry.
More room there, and, uh, the whole, all the teams came together and they were there till about five o'clock, um, where on-site, they were writing statements of, uh, about what they observed. And out of this whole process, we will get, um, not a school-by-school snapshot, but, uh, how is the SU doing toward providing what we should be? Uh, and we'll get two commendations of things we're doing well and two recommendations for things we could work on. Uh, and that, you know, again, pretty short and sweet, uh, the message we got from the Agency of Ed was we're here to allow you to show off the best of what's happening in your school, so we can highlight that. Uh, and I felt as if that was what we saw today from, from my perspective.
I'll, I'll add to that, one, one highlight for me, I just happened to be walking by about fifteen minutes into the first tour as the, they were coming this way, and it's probably the shyest of the three tour guys in that first fifth-grade group, who was like visibly meek at the beginning, was like bubbly and jumping around, showing that, um, the mural on this hallway, but this wall closer to us, the care's mural, they walked by that, it's across in that graph of all the PBIS stuff. Um, he was like, our class painted this, and I painted this part up in the corner, and, you know, the, the, you can tell the adults who were there, that's who they wanted, I mean, they loved that part of it, um, and and they were, they were just fired up by it, so that, that was a real positive for me, um, yeah, it's a good opportunity for student leadership.
Yeah, it really is.
Yeah.
So when we find out the results, I mean, we'll be happy to share them with all of our school boards, I think, um, the next step for us, those of us who were trained, we all now have to go to other schools and do the same thing there. I'm gonna be going with Kosha to Milton, others will be going to Maple Run or Franklin Northeast, so that we're seeing what's in other schools and they're seeing what's in our schools, and we have an opportunity to learn from one another, too, so it's kind of a nice process. I have to really commend Kosha for the amount of work. They weren't just visiting, they also had documents we had to submit for their review, our improvement plans and just tremen- curriculum, things like that, um, so they had all of those things to review as well. Kosha did a huge amount of work, MBU did a tremendous job of, uh, the library was all set up, the abbey was there providing food, uh, and, and being welcoming, uh, for all of these people, um, and every one of our principals worked so hard to make sure that our schools were shown off in the best light, um, and that students and families were, uh, prepared for these kinds of questions. It was a ton of work, and I'm, I'm really appreciative of how the energy that our leadership teams put into this, being a good day. So that's really what I wanted to highlight in the superintendent's report, 'cause I'm sure I'll have some things to talk about for Act forty-six.
You think?
I might.
Okay. Uh, on to new business. First thing on new business is the bond vote results and next steps. So first thing, I'd like to thank, uh, our community voters for passing our bond, uh, very, very much appreciated. Uh, we can start fixing up this building. And then on to the next steps.
Okay, so, um, typically what happens now is, and I've, I've already started this process, I have contacted, um, bond counsel as well as the bond bank and let them know that you had a successful vote. I actually obtained your legal opinion today, which is a necessary step to move forward from, um, Paul Giuliani, who's bond counsel. That's good, we're all set, we followed all the rules, everything was warned properly, all those doc, everything happened the way it needed to happen, um, and he's verified that. Um, application will be due to the bond bank somewhere around May fourth or the week thereof, um, and then the bond bank will review and plan for those, um, between the beginning of May and the beginning of June. Around mid-June, um, we would find out if the application is approved, um, and enter into that, um, agreement, but that may or may not, uh, be solidified and actually done, being processed until, um, the end of July. Um, so that being, um, obviously a consideration if we're merging, or even if we're not. Um, I've been talking with Paul Giuliani, who is our bond counsel, and he's been working with the bond bank, um, to problem-solve what that means as far as debt transition, um, in a merge, in a merger. Basically, what it comes down to is there's, needs to be an assumable liability. When that assumable liability happens, no one really knows. There's a gray area, because one entity is going to be dissolving, one, the new entity's going to exist by having an approved bond vote. There's a big gray area, is that technically assumable liability, or does that have to be, um, actually the point at which the bond bank, that paperwork and everything is completed and approved and done, and you actually have the bonds assigned to you? Um, so because of that, um, they're recommending that we, or Highgate, I say we, Highgate Board, um, engage in a bond anticipation note, very similar to your tax anticipation note that you take out, um, while you're waiting for taxes to come at the beginning of every school year, and complete that process and sign with the bank, um, basically a line of credit that you probably would never draw on, because we won't be doing any bond work before June thirtieth. Um, but then you would have, um, that assumable liability or that assumable debt. That way you would be insured that the liability and the debt repayment would be the responsibility of the new district and not Highgate only. So, um, he also, my question, my first question to him was, I know there's rules around going to voters when you're going to be incurring debt for more than a year, or potentially for more than a year or for crosses fiscal years, but, um, he pointed me to a statute, um, that very clearly allows the board to do that in, um, after they've had a successful bond vote. It's Title twenty-four, Section seventeen seventy-three, um, that speaks to that. You're actually allowed to renew that if you had to for up to ten years, once you've had a successful bond vote, so, um, that, I guess, would be my, my recommendation to the board, so that you're assured that, um, that that debt would now be a shared liability to your new school district and not, I'm not really sure what would happen to it, I guess that, they're not really, either, does it belong to no one because they cease to exist, or does the bond never actually close because the entity no longer exists and the new one? Can't assume the debt because it actually wasn't assumable debt at that point, and if you wanna read what the lawyer said, it's all right here. The first paragraph is saying, no one really knows when that point of time happens, but we do know that if you um, engage in a bond anticipation note before June thirtieth, then it is absolutely assumable debt.
Then I think we have to do that.
Yes, it's one of those things where if you do not actually borrow against the line of credit, there's no expense, there's no interest.
Right.
I think what we'd be looking for is a motion, um, to approve, and Laura would go ahead and, um,
Solicit for rates.
Yeah, and then come back to the board, um, for approval.
Document execution, yeah.
So the bank with a line of credit would be depending on the bond? I'm trying to say.
No, the Vermont Municipal Bond Bank is still who we would bond with, but this would be like while we're waiting to close.
Right, that's what I meant.
Yep.
They would be, their insurance is the bond bank.
Yes.
Yeah, yeah, but it allows you to, to close on that debt, um, before June thirtieth. Um, but again, Julie's, um, as Julie stated, technically it shouldn't cost you anything, because you won't be borrowing against it. It, um, it'll be sort of like a paper process, you know, like administrative process that, that happens. I mean, you could, if you needed to, and you wanted to start a project, the bond bank hadn't closed, and it was July fifth, and you wanted to do, move, and I guess it would help you in that way, too, because then you could.
But then we would incur expenses of.
Some interest.
Interest and closing costs and that kind of thing?
There's no closing cost.
No, not that.
No, not on the line of credit, it's not for school districts, no, yeah. And typically, an interest rate on, on a line of credit for a tax anticipation is very low. I've never done a bond anticipation note, but I'm assuming it would work very much, I mean, it's guaranteed, you know, they, they're very little risk, I should say.
Is it three-something?
Hmm?
The, the percentage rate isn't like three-something?
Um, usually around two-something or even one-something, I, I haven't done one in a few months now, so I'm not sure. I know they were going up a little bit, but, um, and I apologize that I didn't have this information before. I, this is just one of those things that we're doing the best with the information that we have as we have it, and I think so is everyone else, so. Um, I do feel comfortable that this would protect the school district.
Well, I'll make that longer.
Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Discussion?
Yes, I'd like to say thank you, Laura, you did a really good job, sent you an email saying that.
Thank you.
It was really great support on this whole thing. You did a lot of running around, round work before we got to the bond vote, and I appreciate that.
Thank you.
Yep.
Yeah, I agree also. I do have a question with the debt transfer and all that stuff. If we get this and we don't merge, what does that mean, nothing?
Nothing, I would just, we would just.
It's same thing, even if we did merge, it just goes away, we don't use it, whatever, okay.
Yeah, yeah. Uh, the one thing I didn't mention, though, and you'll notice it there, is that we would wanna wait until the rescind period, um, or the reconsideration period is over, and that's April sixth. So, um, I wouldn't actually ask you to do anything until then, um, after the vote.
So we're just, we're just giving you, uh, the opportunity to go find us interest rates on.
Yes, yeah, to start that process, so we're not, we don't run out of time, yep.
Yep.
This doesn't give the board the ability to spend more than the.
No, 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 no. It's an, it's a bond anticipation note, very specifically, it will be for the same exact amount of money, the two-point-three-two, um, and the expectation is that you use the bond proceeds to pay it off, and if that didn't happen, there would be a problem, yeah.
Any other discussion? Hearing none, uh, all those in favor of, uh, allowing Laura to investigate line of credits for our bond, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, five zero. Um, s- I have some questions about the bond that, now that, 'cause I've never been part of one in the past, so. Well, I'm new to this, so. Uh, what are the next steps? I mean, I know this is part of the paper trail and stuff like that, and given the fact that merge is coming, um, and we've taught, we've put in there to hire a project manager, like, when do these decisions start getting made? And then who makes the decisions? I mean, at some point, it's gonna become another board that makes all these decisions, right?
Yeah, it, that is true, but it's also very difficult to move forward unless we have, we have an approved bond as far as your taxpayers are concerned, but municipal bond bank has not approved your loan, so. Right. I have no reason to think that won't happen, I've been communicating with them for three months now, um, but we really can't move forward until I have that, that process is, is completed, or I, I wouldn't feel comfortable doing it. Um, so the merge board, if that is what happens, is who then will, but that's why in the article language, we, you incorporate those specific items that you want to do, I mean, Highgate will have representation on that board, but the bond needs to be used for what, what it said in the article.
Right.
Um, so, I, I don't foresee a problem, but.
I, I, I don't either, but I'm just, like I said, I'm new to this. I was just kinda curious, the timeline, I mean, there's a rescind period that ends at the beginning of April, so that's where we can back out of the bond, right, that's what that is?
It, it means that someone could challenge that the bond, uh, wasn't warned properly, or that they wanna revote, or whatever. Even though, I mean, we know that's not what happened, because we've had that verified, but someone could still do that.
Okay. And then after that.
As far as the work, then we wait.
No, I guess, what's the next step? What's, what's the next step after the rescind, I mean, we're waiting to.
I would do the bond anticipation stuff, and then we would be doing all that process through probably mid-July with the bond bank, get everything solidified there, then we would close on the, um, the bond anticipation note, yep. And then we can move forward with maybe some of the summer work that we want to, that will be paid for from the general fund and then reimbursed, because that's how it works, um, some of those smaller things, or whatever the new, whatever the board decides, um.
But they're gonna have to.
Majority of the work would be probably before the first of the year, we would, the first of, um, twenty, uh, two thousand twenty, um, we would really be planning, working with more engineers, probably in the fall of twenty nineteen.
Bid.
Um, and preparing to go out to bid. I would like to go out to bid very early, but we'll be taking guidance from the people we're working with, hiring a construction company, either in the end of twenty nineteen or the beginning of fiscal year twenty. There's a lot to do.
When do you hire, uh, when do we hire, uh?
Project manager.
GM?
Yeah. Yeah, construction manager, um.
When?
Oh, gosh, the fall before the summer work, really, I mean, that's.
Winter.
Yeah.
Be like this fall.
Yeah, fall, winter, yeah, 'cause you're gonna work with all, you're gonna work with their engineer, you're gonna develop all those specifications and your designs first, and they're going to help you contract with a construction manager. I wanna get, I wanna be, make sure we're very ahead of that process, um, but, yeah. So fall, winter, and then start with a construction manager, winter, um, go out to bid.
That construction manager has to sign off on all those invoices, too. Right, I mean, that's their responsibility to keep that app budget or under.
Yeah, yeah.
So they're the ones that are gonna have to sign off on those payables.
Yeah.
Yeah, right, right.
So once we this is so confusing, uh, so once we have a, a, a construction manager, does the board still, whatever board it is, whether it's this one or the consolidated board, do they still make decisions on, like, who to hire and?
Yes.
So they just manage the project, where the board is still the authority?
They will be committed, from what I gather, and we can set those demands, too, about when we want them to report to us, what our expectations are, what we're, you know, so we get to set those, but typically, they would be working very closely and reporting to the board and, and, and letting the board know what they need from them, as far as motions, what to approve, when they're going out to bid, who, what you want included in your bid. They're just doing the work for you.
Yeah.
And watching, um.
And then they bring the companies, I mean, the bid, the put it out for bid and then to three people, and then they bring it forward to you.
Mm-hmm.
I remember, right, 'cause I did that for the roof.
Interview subcontractors and, uh, school personnel are often involved in those interviews. Ask very tough questions to make sure, 'cause these are school projects, you can't just take forever to do them, you have to do them while, during certain windows.
Yep, absolutely.
So that's the same thing MBU just went through, right?
Yeah.
They will be working very close.
Uh-huh. When we have a white building, wasn't it a portion of the agenda?
Yeah.
Yeah, I would, every month, every month, probably starting in beginning of the fall of next year, will probably be, it'll be a topic every month, I would think.
I got them agendas in all, nineteen ninety-nine.
I wanna check.
I, I, I'm not sure if we merge, Julie, what a facility committee would look like, but I would assume that a facility committee, committee would probably be also working through this, rather maybe, and then reporting to the whole board, similar to what happens at local levels right now, but I, I guess that's yet to be determined if we.
The board will have to decide what, what makes sense.
Yeah, 'cause, I mean, potentially, they're gonna be managing two bonds.
Three, oh, yes, two.
Well, not, well.
If, if there's a merge, yes, it would be two bonds.
Well, MBU's work will be major, mostly done, and Sheldon would no longer be part of our.
Right, so.
So it would be decided.
Mostly, I mean.
Any other? Uh, yeah. Any other bond questions, discussions?
So, and it's a long ways away from this, uh, hearing what the discussion is, I just wanna put it back on the radar that when we start to, uh, pack a lot of project, uh, the rec, commission would still like to be part of it and see if we can extend the, the walking.
Walking back.
Uh, I know we talked about it probably twelve, fourteen months ago, but just put it on the radar, so that it's recorded and new board can know that we've talked about it previously, and that we still feel the same way.
Okay.
Would, would RISE still be involved in it, no?
I don't know if, I can't speak for them, Richard, but I know that we still have a RISE, uh, community representative for Highgate, that, uh, you know, I don't know what their findings are, and with expanding out of Franklin, Greenmount County, so, but it's definitely something I think we could, could look into as a group discussion.
Okay, uh, on to stormwater grant.
So we had a meeting, um, last month, it was.
So, we had a meeting, um, last month, it was the nineteenth of February. Laura will remind me when I forget something, cause it was a while ago. Um, and we met with folks from, um, Department of Environmental, I can't remember what.
Me either, right at the moment.
But, uh, we met with those folks, we met with Amanda, who is managing the project, uh, and, um, we had a, a great meeting to really speak specifically about Highgate, about the property, uh, the stormwater permitting process right now. The expectation is within a year or two, they're preparing that process now, it's going through the state channels. Highgate is on the cusp of needing to have a stormwater permit, uh, and because Franklin County and the Lake Champlain sort of area, northern Lake Champlain area is a high priority, and, um, it is a priority of the state and federal government around this stormwater problem that we have, that schools don't have to pay for this work, so, we are pretty much guaranteed grants all the way through this process. That was a huge relief to me. I talked to them about the bond and the parking lot, and they feel very confident that everything they do will be right in sync with whatever we and the board choose to do for the parking lot, um, that they can meet timelines, if you wanna do something, um, that drains under the parking lot, or if you wanna do something that's separate to it, that they will work with the board on all those designs. The first part of the process, they're, they're gonna come over the April break, and they're gonna do the soil testing that they do. Um, there will be a thirty percent design phase, where the board will then look at options, uh, and then go with the direction that makes the most sense to them, to you, uh, and then, uh, eventually, they'll be a hundred percent, this is what is really gonna, they'll go all the way down to what it really, the design, specific design, uh, and then we would be applying for the next round of grants that would then pay for the actual work, and we would be a high priority. So, the board has decision-making authority all the way through the process, they're completely aware of what they're doing, uh, with the parking lot, uh, and the bond, uh, and will work in partnership, the designs, all around that. Um, so, I think that rather than something I was a little nervous about, I think it's going to be a benefit, um, to supplement the work that we're doing, uh, and, you know, hopefully, we don't have to, that, we, we will be able to redo the parking lot and have, uh, better solutions, so that we don't have to do again. Uh, and also, you know, we're not dumping water off the property, uh, that I know upsets the neighbors, uh, and, for good reason. And, uh, I also think, um, I was worried about the cost too. And because, for example, we have to, we found out we have to regrade that fire road, put some gravel out, well, then that would add to our impermeable surface, which may be pushing us up to the three, you know, three acres anyway. So, we're gonna be all set, um, when these permits come out, and it looks as if, um, the state and federal money will be there to help the school pay for it.
So, um, Ty was talking walking path, and, and I heard that that came up, that the storm water is affecting where the walking path is, so what does, what does that mean with the walking path, that, you know?
Well, I don't know about, nobody talked about moving the walking path.
No, 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 no.
But it, it counts, in terms of the surface. Um, it, anytime there's something like the compounded ground of a walking path, or gravel, that counts toward our, um, impermeable surface, that we have to think about runoff. But, uh, again, they're gonna design around our property and bring multiple options to the board to look at and decide what direction you wanna go in. So, if a solution involved moving something, you know, that would be a part of the board discussion. Yep. It was all new learning for me, so if it, you know, I'm, I'm, it's a whole other world. But, money and decision-making, those were the things I was looking out for. I think it's gonna be a, a benefit to both, both of the schools that are involved.
Any other questions with the stormwater grant? Uh, hearing none, we'll move on to old business. Uh, up first, Act forty-six update.
Where to start? Um, first, as Chris said, the, uh, it's very important that folks in Swanton, Highgate, and Franklin attend the March twenty-first, uh, next part of our organizational meeting. It was postponed on February twenty-fifth, uh, till, until the twenty-first. Uh, we wanted to hear, uh, what the judge would say around an injunction. Um, we did have a judgment around the injunction, so, um, we'll talk about that in a minute. The organizational meeting will start off with voting for a moderator, a clerk, and a treasurer. We'll be voting on how much to pay those officers, how much to pay board members. One of the most important things we're gonna be voting on is how we will vote as the three communities. Will we vote on budgets, board members, and other school questions? Pardon you, by Australian ballot, or will we do that by, um, a, a special, or, or a regular school district meeting? Uh, so, that's an important vote that we have. I believe we're also gonna be, uh, voting as a community, uh, to allow the new school districts more money and to operate, and things like that. So, um, please, as many folks as possible, uh, attend and spread the word, um, we're posting things on Facebook.
What time does that meeting start?
Seven.
It will be seven o'clock again. So, that.
One time, Dana.
Excuse me?
One time.
So, we have, okay. Um, in terms of the lawsuit, um, Judge Mello did, uh, is, I'm sure you're all aware, um, Judge Mello did make a decision that a preliminary injunction would not be granted, um, and he made it very clear, uh, about the possibility of the litigants, um, winning on the merits of the case were not substantial, uh, and that the risk of harm was not, um, there. So, he did not grant an injunction, um, so we have that piece of information that came since the February twentieth meeting.
Did that get appealed?
Hasn't even finished the, having done the dismissal process and the litigation.
A dismissal hearing has been scheduled, I don't know the date, do you? It's in the next couple of weeks.
They're really pushing for the boards to give up, basically.
The.
Well, that, yeah, that's another, that's not the litigation, that's.
That's, that's.
Memorandum.
The, um, so, after, the, after the hearing around a dismissal, it will take probably another two to three weeks, probably be the middle of April, when there'll be a final discuss, decision, and then, yes, both parties will appeal it. You know, depending on who wins, uh, either the state or will appeal it, or, or the litigants.
Yeah, so matter what, no matter what the judge had, which way they had, he had gone, somebody's gonna appeal it.
It will be appealed to the Supreme Court, and that takes a chunk of time, so, you know, we also can't wait until the Supreme Court.
Yeah, that's the problem, there's, your timeline's smaller and smaller.
No, the Supreme Court could take a year, you know, so, um, unless there is a delay in the legislature, which is the next piece, we can't wait for that piece to happen. Unless, of course, the judge rules in favor of the lawsuit, which.
It's pretty unlikely if he didn't give us the injunction.
His previous decision did not make that very likely, but I'm not a gambler, so, you know.
Then it'll be a scramble, right?
So, the Senate Ed is hearing testimony this week around a delay, um.
But it's not on Bill H thirty-nine, they created another.
It's a new amendment.
Hybrid of that bill.
Yes.
And so, because of that, then it, there's even a longer process to, if they passed it, it would be an even longer process before we got to the way.
Right, because if it is voted out of committee, then it goes to the whole Senate floor, which, then they vote on it. It's not the same as the House, uh, bill that was passed, so then they would have to conference, and they'd have to come to agreement about it, and then it would come out of the conference committee, and then it would go to the, so, it's, um, a lot of delay to the delay.
And we pay these people, huh?
Um, well, that's the way bills become laws, and, and, you know, I'm not sure what I think about this particular bill, because I, it puts the onus on the school board, instead of pointing at Montpelier, then it sort of politicizes the new school board, which I don't feel, I don't think it'd be a problem in our community, but I can see that it would, could be a, you know, you just get on the school board so you could vote one way or the other, instead of getting on a school board to.
Educate kids.
Yeah, right, exactly, so, I, you know, I'm a little worried about this, I like the other one better, actually, than this one, but I'm not the one voting.
Right.
Um, but I know we have people testi, uh, testifying. Um, the other big piece, uh, which David and others have been talking about, is we did receive, it's been reported in the press, uh, within the, um, Messenger, uh, and, uh, Vermont Digger, um, that there is a memo from the Agency of Education, where they have been very directive, um, and in some ways, we sort of wish they were not this directive, but a little more directive along the way, they've been kind of wishy-washy, that's unfair, hedging their bets with the lawsuit, cause they, but once that injunction was denied, they came out really strongly and said, look, the law is the law, you have to, uh, follow the law. It's targeted specifically to those of us who had organizational meetings that were postponed or delayed, and they were really strongly saying, look, if you do that again, then you're actually interfering with the board's obligation to prepare under the law for the running of your school.
And the effects to the children, is what it said.
Impacting the children, which is very true, uh, you know, we, um, if we don't have school budgets and we can't hire teachers, and we aren't ready to set up and be prepared for school, um, you know, that's our legal obligation to do that, so, um.
They did mention that, uh, and if we didn't do it, they would step in and do it.
They did, and they pointed to, um, Title sixteen one sixty-three, I think it is, where they really specify, um, they can take over your school, they can close your school, they can change administration, they can do all, they can manage your finances for you, um.
At eighty-seven percent of your budget.
Right, well, that piece, um, we don't actually have a current law that would give us the ability to borrow eighty-seven percent of a previous year's budget, because we're a new district, and we don't have a previous year's budget.
Yeah.
So, the Agency of Ed is actually working very hard with, uh, leaders in the House and Senate to have bills ready and fast-tracked to allow us, should we not pass a budget, to have funds to run school, July one. And for that, I'm very appreciative. Uh, because the timeline, this memo is very specific for each of the districts in our situation, and Franklin Northwest would have to be getting petitions for the new district board to town clerks by March twenty-fifth. So, those of you that have the intention of running for the new district board, I'm just looking in this general direction.
You have a bond, yeah.
It, it, you know, should you be interested in pursuing what the bond looks like and the work, get those petitions, get those petitions to your town clerk by March twenty-fifth, I will have Puratt send them to you. Um, to all the board members, so that they can give them, either get petitions signed themselves, or, or to others.
At this point, it'd be two from, because we haven't voted on the articles of agreement.
Right, what's interesting is the transition board will need to decide whether they're going to present the voters with the articles of agreement or not, are we there yet or not? Cause we had said some of them, we kind of needed to wait to see how the lawsuit shakes out. So, we could present the articles of agreement to the voters and a slate of three, uh, board members from each community. We could do that, um, but, um, we'd have to discuss it. At the very least, we would need two from each community, because that's what the default, uh, articles say. So, petitions in by March twenty-fifth, um, board members, uh, that are appointed to the transition board can be sworn in now, um, so that we can actually have a meeting right away, um, and we could warn that election.
And, uh, we would just get sworn in at town clerk's office, right?
You can just go to town clerk, absolutely.
That's Kristen, uh, Steve.
Yep. And.
For the transition board.
Following, I'm, I'm looking, I'm skipping, my eyes are skipping around, forgive me, I, I wanna look at the right school district. So, if those petitions are in, and the transition board warns an election, uh, an election can occur for new board members and possibly articles on April thirtieth, two thousand nineteen. Uh, you have a board meeting that next day, and you warn, uh, the budget, it could be presented to voters on Tuesday, June fourth. So, when we say tight, we mean pretty darn tight.
Go, 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 go.
So, my hope is that we can get the transition board together quickly to look at the merged budget, so that we have a budget to, um, warn. Well, actually, they, um, we have to quickly just warn an election of the board members, but the transition board can't, um, warn the budget, only the elected board can do that. But you'd be working all that time.
Get it prepared.
So, when you mentioned the SU meeting might not be, I don't know that we'd need an SU meeting, that would be a perfect date to have a transition board meeting, depending on how much work there is to do.
It's almost same group of people anyways.
It's very similar, we would likely, uh, be having multiple meetings, um, we'll have policy to adopt and things, and I'm, I'm working on getting the policies, the mandated policies, the ones we have to have, and get those in order first, so that the board can just go through a process of, they're all pretty boilerplate anyway, so that should be the place to start, and then the board can work from there on other policies, but we wanna be able to be up and running.
Steve?
Should we need to.
Isn't this whole lawsuit in regards to unconstitutionalism? And how can they mandate an eighty-seven percent budget on us, force us on an eighty-seven percent budget? I just don't understand why we're, we're fighting it for a reason, and yet they can still mandate.
Cause it's the law.
It is the law, um, so, when, it's, it's supposed to be, it's in Title sixteen currently, so, and it's, usually has nothing to do with a merger, right? It has to do with, uh, you know, you can't pass school budget, and it's now July first, if you can't pass a school budget by June thirtieth, and you've tried, um, that it's a protection, so you can at least borrow this much money, um, to get started. Um, and we don't have that ability, so if for some reason, and I would really urge voters to pass the school budget, because we want to, um, put a responsible budget in front of the voters, and yet we want to, um, be able to have school.
So, even though we're fighting it, it still can be overrun by the.
Oh, yeah.
Wow.
The fight is against the current law, so the current law stays in place unless the fight is prevailed, is my understanding.
That's a better answer to your question.
Sorry, I'm.
So, the petitions you were talking about that are due next week is for the transition board or the new board?
The new board.
New board. How would a community member, not myself, get?
Uh, Puratt will have, it's just like with MBU, we have, uh, district ones that we do, so, we will create some, and you just need thirty signatures and, uh, file it with your town clerk.
For people that don't know who Puratt is, it's in the central office?
Puratt Mouchard in central office.
Could they also get him at the town clerk's office within their town?
I'm betting we can make that happen.
So, I would say, if, I would go to your town clerk too. If you're interested in running for the board, start there, and they will point you in the right direction if they can't do it.
So, one of my questions has already been answered, but I'm seeing. I'm seeing there's communities in Vermont right now that are pretty much trying to tell Montpelier, "No, we're not doing this," and nobody's running for the board. And that's not a good decision from one of the areas, because they're gonna come in whether you want it or not. So you might just run.
Well, one of the things.
Well, one of the things, I'm sorry, one of the things we lose is all that work we did on the Amendment Committee. That, that goes away. So all the things that we tailored, you know, we took a situation we don't want, and we tried to tailor it to at least make it fit our community somewhat, that goes away. And we lose control, we lose, we lose a lot more than I think we gained by fighting it that way.
Right, if we just obstruct, right, at this point, of course, if there's a delay in the legislature, that's another situation of court. But if there is no change, can't we, saying if all the time is half the difficulty. If there is no change, and we are obstructing everything, we get the Articles, the default Articles are imposed on us. We don't have choice around whether we have Australian ballot or a town meeting. We don't have choice about a lot of things. Now, it's, it's not a good situation. And part of the struggle in the community with this law along has been about choice. And so at some point, you lose, it's, you know, you lose the ability to make choice. It'll, it'll be up to the boards and the communities to make those decisions, but. Yep, I'm not, I'm, you know, I'm here sharing what the law is and what the communication is.
And that was the thing too, Julie, is there was a lot of communication in those meetings. I don't know, all the times.
Yes. I mean, I'm not worried about our communities, the board members, whether they're for, nobody was for it. Let's be clear, you know, everybody likes to point to Swanton as if they were for something, but nobody was for a merger in our communities. But depending on where they are now about moving forward or waiting, all the board members are really invested in working together through this and have come together and compromised so well together. And, and the, you know, my hope is that those, those of you that have been a part of this process continue to be a part of this process, so that it'll carry that through to a new district and, and help with the communication from the local district boards to the merged boards. I, I think that that is our greatest hope for success, is to have that continuity and communication. Think, is there anything that I'm missing that, it just feels like a lot, and every time we meet, there's new things?
And yet, nothing decided.
That's what I'm scared of, your comment, your Julie, is that there's been so much delay. There's bound to be missed things, you know, it's just.
And nobody's fault.
And nobody's fault, at all. It's just, water is so muddy right now that it's, you know. I mean, to be honest with you, at the local level, I have faith in everybody that's at these tables. But if I had the money, my children would not be in public school in Vermont, because I have no faith in the Department of Education. You know, but, but it's, and it's no reason to any administrator in any school or boards that do it. It's people in Montpelier. I mean, with that leaked memo that came out today from Vermont Digger, that, you know, the next step is once this is forced, it's gonna, they're gonna start forcing it to become one district for the whole state. It's, you know, it's a long ways away, but how far away really is it?
Not that far.
Exactly.
That rumor hasn't been around for about twenty years.
Yeah.
Back when I was, maybe twenty-five years ago, back when I was on the, first ten years I was on board. It's a long time ago. Anyway, they were talking about how eventually, that's the goal of the state, with that one school board.
Director Fed.
That takes care of all of the state of Vermont, one superintendent. Now, how, how can you do that? I mean.
It takes you four hours to get the petition from here. I mean, how could, I mean, yes, we're in a technology world where you can tape it and everything, but you can't get to the building and actually see, I mean, you can tell anything you want, but until you see it with your own eyes.
See, people probably would.
Blind faith.
The board would work out of Montpelier, but what do they know about school in Bennington or the one in Highgate?
They'd still end up having regional areas of management.
Much like the Vermont School Board Association, so, so I, I can speak to that, because I was a vice president, president, and member-at-large and whatnot over the years there. So one person does get spread thinly, but when you do it regionally, and you have maybe two members and not one member overseeing a region, you can manage to scoot into a building, you know, in one community or county at a time. And there's a lot of schools, like, you know, I did Chittenden Grand Isle, so, there's a lot of schools.
And so they still aren't getting the attention that.
They don't get the attention that your very own school board and your very own community would give. That being said, I was though a Chittenden County community member, so I did care about the region I was representing and, you know, I reached out. And that, I think that's key too. You know, the people on the other end who are going to do this in Montpelier, if they're going to do this, have to reach out and communicate, just like we would have to reach out. But I think you'll, we would find that the frustration on this end is far greater, because everybody's used to getting answers. They see us once a month at a minimum and can come in and fill this room and have a discussion with us face to face. You know, that gets lost. It's, it may be lost in some of the that we're doing. You know, we hope not, and.
We'll work hard to make sure not.
Exactly, but people are going to feel that way. They're gonna feel like they're losing a little bit of something.
I will say that there was a lot of flack over that memo around the one school district idea. And I don't know that we're gonna be hearing any more about it anytime soon. But I just found it interesting that we're doing all of this imposed merger work, and then that came out at the same time. I found it interesting.
Dave's right on the money, because I too was a board member back then, I'm, I'm old. And so merger was discussed at that time as well. And the two have always been discussed hand in hand.
Yep.
Like, I've never known a time they weren't, one a bit more quietly than the other. But it's gotta be twenty-five years that merger's been discussed.
Seems like it was in the mid-nineties or something.
Yeah, yeah.
I have to tell you, there are school districts, lots of them. Somebody was describing just this week to me, a trip to San Antonio, Texas, where they have school districts that are housed in like high-rises with a hundred and ten thousand students in them, and the superintendent's office and the business offices at the top, and this pool, you know, it's, but that's, the numbers aren't the issue, because there are places with such populations. But school districts with thirty, fifty, a hundred thousand kids in them, it's just the way they are organized. But they're together.
They're not spread out.
It's not like Vermont and Wyoming and Montana, and places where we have such rural landscapes.
Geographically, they're in the same place.
Absolutely, so I would be pretty skeptical.
We have some communities, me having been from one, where geographically, you know, you're challenged to put all of your students under one roof.
Yeah.
Which, you know, was the case for us in Chittenden East for, well, Bolton, Jericho for a long time. You know, we had kids spread out until we were finally able to do a bond, to build a building and put everybody under one roof, but it's tough in Vermont.
So, we're moving forward, and we're working with the boards. You know, we're gonna focus on the organizational meeting. We're gonna, we do have executive session requests, so I can talk about contracts and things like that. And we're, some conversations with the association around some of those issues. But we're doing the planning so that we can have, we can be prepared within the short timeline.
So with that, I guess we would. Yep.
Julie, and it's not Highgate, but it's for potential sixth-grade parents and stuff. Is the coffee with an administrator at MVU?
Twenty-eighth?
Yeah.
Yep, absolutely, March twenty-eighth, from three to, I don't know, it's actually on the sign. And I usually have my minutes from the last board meeting with me, and I put my MVU meeting minutes away. But it is March twenty-eighth at three o'clock, and it's an opportunity to meet and have conversation with the administration at MVU. Thanks for bringing it up.
Steve?
I was late, because you guys don't talk to me.
We try not to, anyway.
I do mail y'all. I was like, come on. Did we do anything on the meeting organization up above? Did I get signed up for anything?
Oh, yeah.
Oh, everything.
Be surprised.
You weren't here for that, so we, we signed you for all of it.
That's the way it works.
Yeah.
Yeah, you're, you're still the board clerk. Yeah, you're still the board clerk, you're still on the SU board, you're still on the finance committee?
And grounds we decided to put in.
No.
Oh.
So, nothing's changed for me?
Nope, and you're still on the transition board, buddy.
Go get sworn in.
Yep.
Go get sworn in.
Go get sworn in.
Or let me do it.
Oh, I have to do that, yeah?
Okay, so I'll entertain a motion to go into executive session to discuss teacher and administrative contracts. Where, where is it written here somewhere? Ah, where premature public knowledge would clearly place the board and the other party at a substantial disadvantage.
I'll make that motion.
Hold on a second.
Any discussion? Who are we gonna invite in?
We would not need Chris.
Thanks, Ty.
Thanks, Ty.
Thanks, Ty.
Thanks, Ty.
And Laura already knows this, so you can go home. I mean, if it's up to me, it's board's pleasure, invite anybody.
So I would say we'll invite Julian. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, or carries by zero.